Stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is the opening of the public hearing for the approval of discussion for the budgets, 2023-24 budgets. The floor is open. Did everyone get a copy of the revenues and the so on? Just here, the budget highlights.
Can I have a question, please?
Sure.
About the wage increase. How, what's the ratio behind the after the three percent last year? Now another four percent?
A couple of things, the inflation rate where it's at and the wages that around us. Trying to keep our employees competitive so we can keep everyone. And I think our employees do an outstanding job. I think most of you know our staff, you go right down the line. You got a sewer plant, you got one operator, which is unheard of. Have one operator in a sewer plant. We've only got two DPW guys to take care of this whole village. We have two guys in electric, by ocean rules you have to have two. But two guys in electric to run a whole system is pretty well unheard of. And that's all being done without a DPW supervisor. Most systems, a lot of them have a separate supervisor just for electric to oversee that.
Well, as you know, the village has operated very well without supervisor.
And that's because?
Yeah, because the guys are doing their jobs.
Well, and they should be compensated for that.
They have been compensated well.
Well, that's a matter of opinion.
And I'm not, it's not a question of whether they deserve it or don't deserve it. I'm just saying that, I'm just one individual that I'm asking a question. I'm not saying yea or nay about it, but you know, a lot of people are not happy and wish they'd shown up to let you know that they're not happy with another four percent raise in, after a year. And there are a lot of people, as you say, inflation, there's a lot of people in this village that are hurting also. And it's difficult for them to understand how the village can do it and they still haven't paid their taxes. And I know just about everybody involved with being village workers are residents and pay taxes also. But it's a difficult situation. So I'm just asking for clarification. And again, it's unfortunate that more people have not come so they could give their thoughts on the matter and maybe bring up other points that I'm not thinking of or could not.
Grace, I'm going by, like I said, the systems around us. I know the, you know, the employees, their wages, even with these raises, we're behind them. Considerably behind them.
Okay, but Joe, so the fact is, when you're making comparison with other villages, quite often we're smaller than they are and don't have all the resources that they do too. So taking that into account, and people have voiced this, and again, I wish they were here instead of I being the one, you know, to expressing these thoughts. So I thank you, you know, for the explanation. But again, I know people are just not happy with that. They're not getting raises, you know, so that's kind of thought for a lot of them too. We have to handle, you know, something else. They're dealing with inflation also and they're not being compensated for what they're doing.
Can I just ask, what for the year would be the cost of the increase in dollars?
In general, it's $4,000, $1,520 for a job.
Thank you.
What's the increase in the, in this work ethic?
Is 1,892.69.
And then the electric is?
2,386.29.
Again, our wages are below our neighbors for this workforce. All our people are over and above. I can't say enough about the employees, the work they do, the girls in the office. Courtney, all, the whole staff. And they should be compensated for it.
You don't get any argument from me about the goodness, the diligence and the performance of the employees. I have thanked them personally myself many times because I know they do a good job. But I'm trying to bring in other factors that people have expressed. And unfortunately, again, they should be here expressing instead of me being the one bringing these things up.
Do we expect a tax increase this year?
No, there'll be no tax increase. At the mayor, I want our people compensated for the jobs they do compared to the wages that are out there to do these positions. We're not paying people here a lot more money than the going rate. We're trying to get our people up to their rate to keep our people here. I know that people already like it here, but you can only, you can like it here, but you have to afford to stay here. And all our people, there's.
You just made one of my points for me, Joe.
I'm just saying, our people are so qualified that they could, any of them could leave for more money, but they're here. Let's pay them a wage where we can, at least they say, hey, we like it here, but don't force us to leave. I mean, we all have to make a living, you know, so I think, I think it's a fair, I think it's a fair amount with the way prices are, the inflation rate. Compensate our employees like this is, to me, it's not out of line at all.
I've had a lot of people come to me in the past couple of days. It's been interesting because I haven't really been functioning up until a month ago. So I didn't really start looking at the budget until last week. And I know I was here in January, but I was not functioning in January. So I can't tell you anything about that meeting. But I had a lot of people in the past couple of days express to me their concern about what it would look like in the future. Can you talk about that of just like this year it's a four percent raise and then there's room in the budget, but what happens with these things next year, in two years? And we have an economy that's not feeling super stable and, you know, there's a lot of people that are on fixed incomes in our area that are struggling and they're not getting an increase in their wages. So can you kind of address that and kind of maybe there are some questions there?
I think you have to look at each year, you know, what's, what do we have to do in the village to keep, keep it going, to maintain it? And see where our revenues versus the expenditures are going to be at that point. I know, I know we're, like I can use the town highway department over here. We're starting to move up close to them. We're not near them yet, but you know, they're DPW guys, our DPW guys. I mean, you intertwine with one another, so you constantly knowing what they make and what the going rate is here, or say over in Churchville. We're trying to get it so it's closer, closer to, to that line. But again, it's a year by year thing. That's why we do a budget every year to see what, you know, what major things are going to happen in the course of a year that will have to be addressed next year.
And I would say from a revenue standpoint, we've been fortunate this last year to come into a number of revenue sources that are attached to tax revenue. So, you know, we talked about my class and how well that's doing for us. If that rate keeps on going up, I mean, as I, we know that at some point it's going to start going down. So right now it's at 4.5%. So it would have to drop down quite a bit to get back to where we were, you know, to drop to full four percent. And we still would be better off because night class compounds interest daily instead of monthly. So that can fluctuate, but I think it's going to take some time. So with that money over the course of probably nine, five years, we're not going to have to worry too much about it. You know, we have additional revenue for the town cleanup, the $7,500 that Barb did with the bookkeeping and the payroll. And that's, I mean, they could, they could choose to go in a different way, we could lose that revenue, but they're very happy with it and I think it will continue to receive in the future. We have the south tower, which gives us good money every year and a kind of four percent increase a year. So the amount goes up four percent there every year, but every time they put any more equipment on that tower, we get a certain percentage of that revenue. So they have to put a couple more on and they're in the works of putting in additional work. It's not how many on there, it's going to be in the footprint of the lease on the ground. That'll give us additional revenue. Let's talk before the apartment and the business space back here. We're getting, and that's something that is very, very rare for a municipality to have revenue from rental property. When I bring it up in NICOM or to the NICOM staff, they, they're like, it is very uncommon. But that's a tremendous amount of revenue that we get that is not taxed. And we had somebody come through here a number of years ago and look at what we're charging. And at that point, it was about five, six, seven years ago, we were on par, but since then, the market's gone so, so fast that it's hard to catch up. So over the next number of years, I'm going to try to catch up to whatever anybody else, be on par with what you have the going rates. So we'll realize more revenue there. If somebody moves out, then, you know, we'll go up to the full amount. So that's another good source of revenue going forward that's stable. So really the financials forecast for the foreseeable, foreseeable future is very good. And based on the amount of money that we have in night class and unappropriate financial balance, we'll have to.
Does that also account for the increasing cost of everything else? You know, everything is costing more. So is our revenue increasing at such a rate that?
It did this year. I know, yeah, I don't know.
It's been a nice sentence to me.
Yep, so it's hard to predict what inflation's going to do, what the gas prices are going to do. You know, it's really, it's anybody's guess. But this year we've gotten so far in front of it that I feel pretty comfortable. You know, in years past, I've been really, really nervous when it came a bunch of times. And I remember Mr. Fidelli always asked me, you mean grave to how the financials are doing? And there's many years I was like, oh, this is awful. I was scared there for a while because there was a point where we were so, so low in our income for, we didn't have really any cash in electric. So when the big bills came for, we had to pay for the electric that we buy, we had to borrow money from General every month to, until we had what we paid and got back even. But now we're well past that and we're into a really good spot. So I believe that going forward, that expenses and revenue should be fine. But, you know, I can't say for sure. If we have a huge depression or, you know, people predicting, who knows? You know, the next couple of years, if anything stays the way it is now, I think we're looking pretty good.
I know another concern that has been brought to me has been the breaking of the contract for the union. The union contract is two percent and I believe it's up this coming year. Is it June or something?
May 31st.
Okay.
Next year.
Yeah, 20.
Four, 24. So the next, so this budget year is in the same contract, but next budget year it's getting a new union contract and there's concern, I've been, I'm sorry, I haven't spoken outside of my house in a while, so bear with me. There, as people have expressed concern to me about breaking that contract and what that will mean for in negotiating the contract in the next, this next roundabout.
Have no effect on that? You know, that contract and all that, we're going to negotiate.
All right. And you don't think there'll be an expectation of a bigger jump?
There's going to be a bigger jump next time. These linemen aren't going to, the going rate now for linemen is well, well, well over what we're paying ours now. There's going to be a big increase. I'm not going to lie to you now. It's coming. That's, that's the market for linemen. You just can't say, oh, let them go because you can't hire anyone for any less money. There's a shortage pretty much nationwide of linemen. Yeah, we're going to have to negotiate the best we can, but yeah, there's going to be, this extra money, all that's getting a little higher now than what we'll have to meet, you know, in that next contract.
Our lineman could go to RG&E and I said for $58 an hour to start today. Why they don't, it's beyond me, honestly. If I was the reviewer, I'd tell them clean your order.
Well, a lot of them will.
Fortunately, we have people that are dedicated and do like the system that we have and we got to be competitive. If not, sooner or later, liking a place and, and a pretty lucrative lifestyle, you go with the lucrative lifestyle. And that's what we're trying to head off. And it's not just the linemen, it's everybody. You know, if we lose one person in office, we lose half the staff. Half the staff, half the work doesn't get done. We don't want to lose anybody. Monroe County's paying a thousand dollars per quarter for employee new and existing as a retention bonus. We're right on the border of Monroe County. If we're not proactive, we are going to be a training grounds and we are going to just get to know these folks and then they're going to be gone. That's just the way it works. It's a different reality out there. I just recently retired, I could take six different jobs right now. I'm just waiting for the right one. And our, our folks could do the same thing. Accounting degrees are huge. Data entry is huge. Construction, huge. There's shortage in every one of those industries right now.
I'm going to jump on what Paul said about that too. I think you have to understand also that a lot of the staff has been here for a long time and there is not, you don't see the money we save you as residents behind the scenes. We save you a lot of money. We have things in place. We always carry a negative receivable balance in electric, so we're not chasing electric. I mean, it's ridiculous how good that is. There are other things we do. Barb does the PSC and the AUD. Most people send that out, right? There, we run, we run the BEAP program. We don't have to pay administrative costs because we do it in-house. There's a million little things that add up to big savings for the residents on top of the fact that we give you guys great customer service all the time. And that is something that's really important because we work for you. I think everybody on the staff gives great customer service to our residents. We, we hear the complaints, people go off on us on the phone, we smile, we'll take it, deliver it to the right person and move on with our day. We don't deserve that, but we'll take it. That's our job because we work for you guys.
And you're doing your job and you're doing it well. There's no argument about the effort whatsoever.
I'm talking about the money saving too, Grace, because that is an important thing.
But you're doing your job. That's what your job is and you're doing it well. It's being done.
That's right.
So compensating for it.
So, because in my understanding, the wages are going up, 4,000, did I hear you say that right? 4,000, is that everybody?
Yeah, that's for the general fund.
General fund, so $4,000 more to the village, correct? To the village employees. That's amazing. I gotta speak right now. I came here ready to fight this and if you can give everyone a four percent increase and my taxes don't raise, I'm all for that. You give them a 10% increase and my taxes don't raise, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's amazing. And RG&E, I work for RG&E and we grab all, everybody from all these villages, you know, we grab them, we grab them from the DPW, that's where we get them from.
Well, RG&E, all the linemen, they're grabbing all the muni linemen.
Yeah, well, sure.
And it's not like we can just hire a guy off the street and say, hey, come, we'll send you to school. We can't do that. You're just saying you've got to have two trained linemen. You can't have one guy that doesn't know anything working with one guy that knows it. It's illegal. Something happens, the village is liable. You've got to have two trained linemen. So it's not like you can just say, oh, let them go and let them go and then I'll get somebody else, but you're going to pay somebody else just as much. So what have you gained?
Right.
Nothing.
You're constantly training somebody, constantly, constantly got turnover training somebody. And, you know, I know RG&E, it's a, it's three years. It's a three-year training process.
It's four.
Yeah, right. Because it's not, nothing you can, you're not going to take someone off the street and make them a lineman. So if you can keep these guys happy, that four percent increase.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
That's, that's my feeling exactly. It's compensating for a good job they're doing. Thank you for that, your input.
What's your name?
Doug Smith.
Okay.
You know, they typically do a three-year contract for the union, yes. Now, to be honest, the sewer, it's on the sheet here, it's the last item on this sheet. It says, you know, as the many sewer projects progress, that will begin affecting the budget in two years, okay? And then they also, the other thing is when the guys get the different sewer licenses, you know, you have to compensate them for those, for those sewer licenses because sewer is another one where there just aren't any people out there qualified and certified by the state. The state's got so many, so many mandates on everything. You have to be certified, pass all the tests to, to be in those positions and you need to compensate them for getting those certifications.
What will it do to the sewer budget when, and even the general budget, when Eric gets certified? Hopefully this May, right?
It'll be a little longer than that.
Okay.
He's going to take his, his lab course in May. That'll take care of that, but then he needs his hours and enough time. So he, he won't be able to take his last course and then sit for the exam to get his two A probably until next year.
Okay.
Maybe two, depending on how many hours he needs.
So will that impact?
It's two years, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Two years. If you have a bachelor's degree or associate's degree, then they maybe those two years, but why do you have to go through it?
Will that impact the sewer budget at all this year if he's spending more time there at all?
Yes.
Is that already calculated into all of this?
I'd like to see him spend more and more time there, so he can be the true backup. But for right now, we have a guy from Allagant coming out, you know, he was once, he was three times last month, training to be the backup.
Anything else before I close this hearing? Okay. Forty-three. Let's go on to our regular meeting. Y'all have a chance to look at the bills?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the bills?
I don't get a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Paulos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Approval of the March 8th, 2023 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion. And a second.
Paulos in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying.
Okay. Okay, mayor's report. Happy to say the guys are still working away on the park bathrooms. I was up there today with them, going over a few things. And on May 15th through the 17th, we have it scheduled to have the paving trail in the park all paved. Deca Paving is going to be doing that. We got help from the town inversion highway department to do all the trucking on that to help us out. I thank them for their assistance with, with the project. The consolidated funding application, the county budgeted money for grant writers for all the municipals in the county. And we received $5,000 from the county to be used for grant writing services. So we've hired Clark Patterson Lee to draft and submit a park grant on the village's behalf, utilizing that, those funds from the county. I know the town also took advantage of that and they hired a grant writer also, so. The Newman I Preserve New York Grant, grants have been drafted and submitted by the village here to seek funding to expand the historic district in the village. The grant could potentially fund 80% of the project. Funding opportunities such as the New York State Historic Home Ownership Tax Credit Program and the state and federal commercial rehabilitation tax credit programs would become available to homeowners and commercial buildings who meet the criteria of the program. So we'll wait to hear back if we receive that grant, it's been submitted. And if we do, then we can, the board will discuss moving ahead with that. Tree and Park Committee's been very busy. We, like it says, working very diligently towards achieving the goals for the future of not only Hickory Park, but of all the parks in the village. The committee is planning a workday on April 15th, which is this Saturday, for general cleaning up. So we're going to bring our rakes there and the committee, Renee, Todd, myself, Mary Ann Fleming and John Chuck are on that committee. So we'll be there. Anyone else who wants to come up and help us will be there, probably around 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning and rake and leave and picking up sticks and getting the park in somewhat shape. I started up the Genesee Justice Works also. I gave him a call to see if they had any clients that we could utilize. They have one, he's coming out here tomorrow, or I'm, take that back, Friday. Friday morning, 8 o'clock, I'm going to have him at the Hickory Park also cleaning out. So to date, that brings us up to 110.5 hours of free labor that we will have received from Genesee Justice. I attended the Burris and Fire Department monthly meeting on April 3rd and the owner of the fire we pin was there. We probably, everyone here should know that fire that they had there and Brandon was there and he very thankful to the fire department for their quickness and the professionalism they showed in putting that fire out and saving, you know, a lot of that building from total destruction. So he couldn't say enough good, and I can't say enough good about our fire department So he couldn't say enough good, and I can't say enough good about our fire department here. So he also, there was a GoFundMe account set up and he's donating half the money that goes into that GoFundMe account back to the fire department as a donation. It's nice. I attended the town supervisors' meeting, the mayor's meeting at the Town of Matavia on March twenty-eighth.
Is that the GAM, the GAM meeting or is that a different?
It's, it's like the GAM. It's all the people, pretty much, most of the people that are at the GAM. It's all the town supervisors and mayors. And got together and the big topic of discussion really was county, how they're allocating the sales tax revenues still. That's the big thing still. And that and the broadband for the county was discussed. Sewer plant and running over right. The UV disinfection treatment system is scheduled for startup on May twenty-seventh. And the work on the lift stations is scheduled to begin in the next two weeks. The electric guys, they had their, all the rubber goods tested by OSHA regulations. You have to have all that stuff tested every six months, so they had that out of the way. We, Courtney and I had a conference call on March thirtieth, National Grid, regarding their executing the option of acquiring the thirty-four-five transmission line on West Sweden Road. That's a line that we built twenty years ago. When it was built, the contract was written at that time that in twenty years, they had the option to take it over. They've leased it now for twenty years. But at the end of the twenty years, they had the right to purchase that line for one dollar. So they're exercising that right. So they had a conference call with Courtney and I to get the ball rolling on that. We turned over the easements that we had. And I'm sure they're gonna be looking for some other information from us, but we'll deal with them when they call. And the other thing was our, we, it's called an interconnection agreement. It's where our facilities hook up with National Grid, stay outside the substation where the main switches are. We don't currently have one, ours ran out two thousand and three. I looked it up, two thousand and three since we've had it. Well, they're, in order to wrap up their acquisition of this thirty-four-five transmission line, this is part of the whole deal. So they wanna address the interconnection agreement at the same time. So I talked with our lawyer from the MUA. And he's been in conference with National Grid lawyers also, so they're working that out. So we'll get that taken care of also.
Is that gonna be something tricky to get together or is it just kind of like redoing the one that, updating the one that's there?
I, I had the lawyer send me a copy of Boonville, who's a municipal electric like us. And I know the, he was the superintendent there for many, many, many years. He's now a trustee on the board there. I talked to him about, about the, they're in the connection agreement with National Grid and that they signed. And I talked to the lawyer about it. He was pretty confident, it was pretty standard. And I talked to Ken, who's, who was the superintendent, and asked him if he had any issues after signing it and ensuing, you know, a few years. And he's basically, no, everything was pretty straightforward, so. We're, we're in the midst of taking care of that, you know, that legal matter also. Needs to be taken care of.
Is there revenue loss, Joe?
No, because when the line was built, like, they leased the line and they had the sole rights.
Okay.
All them poles. So, yeah, they made out because they put telephone, you know, cable want, cable TV wants to go on or Frontier. They've underbuilt their lines underneath our, our power lines on top. They've underbuilt, so they saved all that money and.
Once they take over, we don't have to lease them then?
No, no. They, they've maintained the line for the last nineteen years. We guaranteed it for one year when it was built and for the last nineteen years, they've maintained it. It's a brand new line though. I, I think other than a car hitting a pole, I don't think they've had to do one thing with that line. Paul, you got anything to add about interconnection? You went through with the church, Phil.
Yeah, it's really just defiance, like the point of ownership or changes from the Village Virgin to National Grid. There were some things in there about you, the Village Virgin, maintaining their protections scheme so it doesn't trip upstream of National Grid. It was, it's pretty standard. There's really not a lot to it, honestly. We'll see that when you get one and execute them.
Well, if we have any questions on it, my friend at the MUA lawyer, we'll have him look at it. To be sure, you know, the village is protected. I think that's about it that I've got, Courtney.
Well, my report's all in there packets for you to look at. I don't read the whole thing, but there's a few things I just wanna point out. Fixed rate congestion charges, known as fixed rate TCCs. Years ago, we paid for a long time, I think it was about eight hundred dollars per TCC. And then maybe three or four years ago, it spiked and it was really, really high. These projects were done and then it just dropped like even lower than it was before. So last year, we only paid a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents for the one, per TCC. This year, it's gone way back up and it's at nine thousand four thirteen thirty-five per. And we've always gotten two. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Let me explain that to you, just so you know what the TCCs really are. The NISO, the New York Independent System Operator, they operate the whole, the whole grid for the whole state of New York. They oversee all the power, how it flows, which generators are coming on, which ones are going off, which one's going through maintenance. If there's a thunderstorm coming, you're starting up, you're on standby. So they oversee the whole grid. And these TCCs, they issue these TCCs, they're like a hedge against congestion. If you're gonna have a lot of, say, construction of the, of the power grid in your, in your section, they have to reroute power around. And that's when these charges can really add up for the price to deliver the power. These TCCs are a hedge against that. They kind of limit your liability of what you may have to, expenses you may have to incur should those disruptions happen in your sector. Like Courtney says, in the past, our section's been really well. But what were the, what are they now, the TCCs each?
Last year, last time he paid was one eighty-eight fifty-one per.
Okay, a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Now they're how many thousand?
Nine thousand four thirteen.
So I don't know if the NISO is expecting a lot of rebuilding of transmission lines in this sector or what, but.
Could it also be that some of the solar, wind's coming online?
It could be, it could be, yes. It could be a lot of this wind and solar's coming online and they can't, you know, how, how reliable is the word? How reliable that's gonna be, I don't know. They may have to have other people on standby, generation on standby, just to get this, get it all worked out. But we're going to a NIPA and MUA meeting coming up soon. And all this will be discussed at those meetings, at those conferences. And we'll have a better understanding of why, why these have spiked from hundreds to, you know, to mega thousands. To me, it doesn't make any sense, but. So after those meetings, I will have more info on it, so we'll keep you posted.
And the last thing I just wanna point out is Monday, April twenty-fourth, the seventh graders from school are coming out. So we're excited about that. It's nine AM in Hickory Park. So they're gonna be in the park from probably nine till about noon. Cleaning up and doing different activities, so let's hope to have them again. And I'm excited my son will be with them, so. Could I just especially make him work hard? They set down a sewer plan.
That'll, that'll be our Arbor Day also. So we'll be planting a tree and doing the proclamation to keep our certification for the Tree City. So we'll do that at the same time. Is that it, Courtney?
Yep.
You all have the CEO's, EEO's report? Any questions on that? If not, I'll win a motion to accept the officers' reports.
I have a motion to accept.
Clear second?
I will second.
Paulos in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Privilege deals with full of the floor. Who's in from the floor?
Is there a village curfew? Is that really?
Like the park, I don't.
The park?
Nine o'clock?
Yeah, the park is not.
I mean, the penis is a hole?
Yeah. No. The laundry, that happened at midnight. Like thirteen-year-old kids and fifteen-year-old kids at midnight.
Would he, must have broke in, like, 'cause that door locks it. Ten o'clock, I believe.
The doors, they know not to go in, but they got in and did damage. But at midnight.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no curfew there. Paul. Anything else from the floor? Trustee concerns? Emily, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, it's good to be back. I had just a couple of questions about different things that I think you've discussed over the past couple of months and I just haven't gotten here, so.
Understand them.
Um, one is just the brickwork. I know I saw that on, is that on this feed? So the brickwork for this building, I think it was on the last meeting's agenda. So I'm just wondering what kind of the summary was about that? And what, like, what are we anticipating those costs to be and where are we gonna get that money kind of?
Okay, we, we had Martin Diltcher come here to give us a preliminary, what he thought, okay? He gave us the price. And then the price is so high that we have to send it out for competitive bid. So me and Courtney are gonna be in together. In the next few days, we'll do that. To send, work up a packet and I've got a list of like six contractors that we can submit it to. And have them bid on it and we'll see where we are. If we can't, if we can't do it all, then we're gonna have to address the worst sections. And you say where the money's coming from? We got an extra thirty-two thousand dollars?
It was thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thirty-two, thirty-seven. From the county. It was an extra sales tax distribution that they gave out to all the municipals in the county. They took in more than they expected, so they made that distribution to all the municipals. So we had an extra thirty-seven thousand. So we're gonna, that's money that we didn't count on. So we can use that money to work towards the restoration of this brick before it falls apart. But we're gonna have to keep up on it.
Yeah.
So again, we'll, we'll see what the bids come in at. If we can do it all, we'll do it all. If we can't, then we'll, we'll have to say, okay, here's what, you know, here's what we got yet done now. And then in the next budget, you know, work our way until we get it all boozed up.
And then with the ARPA money, so some of it's going to the bathroom. Some of it's going to paving that.
Track.
Track. And then is there additional funds that will be left over from that? Or is that gonna be pretty much all of it?
I think that's pretty much, because we had other things that we used some of that money on to begin with. Some of the storm sewer.
Oh, right.
We, we, there were a few other things out that some of that money.
The infiltr, no, the infiltration, right.
Yeah, these top two here. Heartland Park, the bridge, we had to repair the bridge, sinking in, put it up on the pier, that was in there.
Okay, and the storm sewer.
Storm sewer.
We're projecting about about nine left. But, you know, that's, we'll wait, we'll see how everything goes.
Yeah, trying to keep that contingency to see where we are.
Okay, and then we have till one, oh, one, gee.
We have, we have until twenty-four to pier mark and then twenty-six, twenty twenty-six to have everything done and cement made.
Okay. The, so with the park, I, lots of people have talked to me about this, the park plan. And I'm like, I don't know anything about it. So I was just wondering if that was something that was put towards the, to the board? The, if the board has seen that or if it's just the park committee has created a land that's out somewhere that I can see that?
We have to, you know, we, we make recommendations and, and.
Yeah.
Our vision and then, you know, we bring it to the board. Like later on, I'm gonna be up a little thing here on the old business, you know? We're not doing anything behind the scenes that this board doesn't know about. Everybody's, you know, upfront here, everybody knows what's going on, so. But I can't say enough about the Tree and Park Committee. Renee's been fantastic. Everybody, but Todd, you gotta admit, she's top notch, she'll be top notch. She's all without you, Renee.
Thank you. Are you talking about like the five-year parks plan?
I, I don't know, I just.
Anything more?
I've had people come to me and say, I don't like what's going on with this park. I'm like, I don't know anything about it. So maybe I could just stop at his office and talk to Tyler.
Well, I will tell you this, I will tell you this about the park committee. We did have a public comment, which was advertised in the newsletter, on our website, on Facebook, and posted locally for last Wednesday. We, the park committee was here for public comment and not one person showed up, not one. So if people have questions or anything, I mean.
Yeah, the meetings are open to the public, so anybody can attend.
Yeah.
Or anybody can join.
Yeah.
Certain amount of people who are on the committee, so anybody can join and be involved.
I agree, it was well advertised. The display was here, the boards were up, to show everything that, you know?
Yeah.
And not one person came in.
I mean, certainly we could bring the board in for you to look at what we've been discussing as a park committee. We have meeting minutes. If you want our meeting minutes, they're very extensive. I mean, you could certainly piece together what we've been doing.
We're gonna have to stop by and see, because I've had people, I'm like, I literally, I have no idea. I can't give you any answers whatsoever. So we're gonna have to swing by sometime and.
It's very extensive, it's very, we have everything, everything. But the five-years parks plan also needs to be completed for the grants.
Yeah.
Which that's in process also.
Okay. Thanks, I think that's.
And also the surveys that were sent out that came back, you know, we definitely take all those ideas into consideration and have helped us in planning some of the things that we're, you know, intending on doing, so.
We got a hundred surveys back and they were very favorable, very favorable to the Hickory Park and the things that people wanna see. And that is actually the number one thing that people want is a resurface walking track out of the surveys.
That's good to know.
Mm-hmm. I have all sorts of materials for you to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it, those are.
Is that it, Emily?
Yeah.
No concerns, ma'am.
Todd?
Yeah, Gary's not here. Do you happen, or somebody happen to know, what is the ordinance on junk vehicles on properties?
Maybe a lot of one.
Okay. I've noticed, Renee, what's the address across?
Seventeen McKenzie, we just talked to him actually. Across the street from me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just talked to him when he was in Tuesday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, what was yesterday? Yesterday, what was yesterday, Tuesday?
There's like three vehicles that are, belong over to Metalico, a lot of other crap just piled up around there.
Did, you say you spoke with him?
We did. I spoke with him.
So you're aware of the...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Bit of an eyesore on the old corner of McKenzie Street.
Is that my apartment?
Yes.
So we're okay, as of right now, giving him a chance to...
He was going to contact the owner, because the owner does not live on the premises.
Okay.
The owner is offside.
We'll keep an eye on him, and...
It's the owner's cars?
No, it's the tenant's cars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you get to see them, Vicky, and hear them.
I hear them.
Probably twenty-two.
And with that, you can file a formal complaint, correct? And then, like, you have to do a written thing before Gary can go and investigate that, correct?
That's the best way, I guess.
Anything else, Todd?
That's it, thanks. Paul? So there's a temporary gas repair over here with the cabinets and off the valve, we can call maybe Argenee and get them back over there.
Is it that same spot?
Yeah, right in front of PA's building.
You on Rochester?
No, right here, right, right across the street, on North Lake, right in front of PA's building here.
Oh, okay.
It's up in the sidewalk, right in the sidewalk.
It's Argenee?
Mm-hmm.
Give me the ad, I was in it. Getting better than that. Tell me where it is. I gotta wait three hours on the phone.
This is good service.
What do you say?
It's sixteen North Lake, right across the street.
I'll, I'll try to get out here tomorrow.
Boy, that worked out.
Thank you.
Is that it for trustee concerns? Okay. Under new business is the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four vote for the budgets. Is there a motion to accept the budgets?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Can I?
Ready discussion?
Yeah, it's perfect. I was just going to say, before we vote, can you guys fill me in on any discussions that's happened? I feel like, like, please catch me up. If there's anything that, you know, has been discussed that I didn't know, I really feel like I'm just like...
I do.
I, I've talked to Courtney a lot the past couple of days, and I'm like, I don't know, I don't know if I'm just going to say like insane, I just feel like, and with everything with the raises, I've been back and forth, maybe I just need the discussion. I've been back and forth, I can see both sides of it, where people are concerned, a four percent raise, and so the whole, just the discussion at the beginning was very helpful for me, and then it's like, I don't know what I'm going to go, I'll just find out when I get there, and, because I think, I think we have fantastic employees that I, I've never heard anything negative about anything, any of our employees. But then I also say, well, what's that going to do in the long run? I mean, I know there's a lot of people on fixed incomes, I added to our family this year and then quit my job, so, and, you know, I totally get that, that concern.
Again, we, we didn't raise taxes.
Right, and I, and I understand that, and I think my concern is a lot of just like the long run, like what does this do in the future, and it's hard because you can't see it. So I just, I just wonder, as a whole, have there been discussions that I missed, and what, what are your guys' thoughts on those? I don't know, I guess.
It changed anything except one clerical error that I remember.
We put a little more money into the roads and what was originally there.
We talked about the, the, some rec program, I think it was like two thousand previous years, we bumped that up to seventy-five hundred.
Oh, that's even bigger than, I must have lost half of my...
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
I mean, that's where that, that, on your copy, is it twenty-five hundred?
Okay. Yeah.
You know, with...
More in the roads, sign laws.
More in the parks.
Parks, some are wrecked. You know, there was that little bit extra, and I didn't, I knew that, we talked, and we weren't sure how much we needed for that, so not that too good. Maybe you weren't here for the sewer electric, but the student, both of those are fairly straightforward, the sewer budget, there's not a whole lot to it. It's limited on everything. Then the electric budget is more complicated, but, you know, for profit, we can make money in an electric, and it's projected to be forty, some thousand profit, almost fifty there. We're trying to build up a little bit of funding there, because we're still recovering from what we're, we're falling on cashing there, but also trying to save as much out as possible for the substations. So one of those entities...